Before the meeting commences, can I please draw attention to the evacuation procedure on the screen behind me. In the event of an alarm, please leave by one of the three fire exits and assemble outside waitrose.
Right, the first item on the agenda is the minutes. Confirm the minutes of the annual council meeting which took place on the 9th of May 2017 and of the extraordinary council meeting held on the 6th of June. As a point of information, councillor Knowles was present at the meeting on 6th of June 2017. Right, that is a fire alarm. I think we are all reassembled, we don't need to send the search party out to the local pubs for any missing councillors. As I was saying before we were so rudely interrupted, the item 1, the minutes, confirm the minutes of the annual council meeting which took place on the 9th of May 2017 and the extraordinary council meeting on the 6th of June. As a point of information, councillor Knowles was present at the meeting on 6th of June 2017, although this has not been recorded in the minutes. Are you agreed that I sign these as a correct record with the amended attendance? I will sign these later. Mr Taylor, are there any apologies for absence?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We've received apologies from councillor Carroll Coburn, Kigamiralese, Libby Piper, Simon Thornton, Mike Hodge, Jeanette Stennett and Stuart Stennett.
Thank you. In accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any non-percuniary or disclosable pecuniary interests to declare, Mr Taylor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Deeney has declared a non-percuniary interest in minute number 33 regarding Springbok Estate, but as there are no speakers on that item, he will remain in the meeting. And with regard to the executive minute from the meeting earlier today relating to the appointment of the interim managing director, Damien Roberts, Strategic Director for Frontline Services, has declared a pecuniary interest and will leave the chamber for the consideration of that item.
Thank you. Are there any further declarations? No? Right, thank you. Right. Mayor's announcements, item 4. Just the one. Recently, over at the Surrey Girl Guides headquarters near Tilford, I challenged the mayor of Guildford to a race on some pedal go-karts. I'm happy to say that it was a runaway win for Waverley. The mayor of Guildford blames a dodgy knee. However, there is now a challenge in return to a ten-pin bowling match at the Spectrum Bowling Alley in Guildford. Each mayor has to put together a team of, I think it's 16, to be made up of half of councillors and half of officers. So I do hope that there will be sufficient of you to get eight councillors together. I've already got three of us, and it's no good saying that you're too old for that sort of thing, because the last time I was on a ten-pin bowling alley was in my very early twenties, and I'll let you do the arithmetic on that. So I do hope that you will come forward for that and we will... Is that a volunteer? Yes! And Jim Edwards? Good. Well, we're up to five, because the mayors of Farnham and Godalming have already said that they are up for it. Oh, councillor Byham as well? Yes. Very good. And councillor Mulliner. It's very similar to croquet. Excellent. Right, well, we are hoping to raise some money for our charities, and so it will be not just a lot of fun, but it will be in aid of a good cause. So, we will move on from there to questions from members of the public. Mr Taylor, have there been any questions?
None received, Mr Mayor.
Right. Have there been questions received from members?
None received.
Have any motions been received from members?
None received, Mr Mayor.
So we move on to item 8, minutes of the executive. The leader of the council to present, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am pleased to present the minutes of the executive of the 6th of June, and I believe I have a seconder.
Happy to second, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have one item in part 1, recommendations to council, and this relates to the request for a conservation area at Dunstfold Park. Colleagues will be aware that Dunstfold Aerodrome sits between the parishes of both Dunstfold and Orfold, and it's one of the 280 hard runway airfields constructed in the early 1940s, and only one, this has been assessed by Historic England. One has been listed, but they're either in poor condition or of significantly altered post-war. And so, Waverley have looked at this in great detail. It's recognised that there is an interesting personal and commercial history associated with Dunstfold Airfield, but overall, it is considered that there are better alternatives to recognising the contribution it's made, rather than designating it as a conservation area. However, Waverley have made clear to the interested parties at all stages that they're happy for them to put any proposals forward. Mr Mayor, it's a very comprehensive report, and you will see that there is one recommendation to that item on page 23. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers on this? No? Oh, councillor Hyman.
Apologies, councillor. Mr Mayor and all members, just to say, we've got a problem with our timer, it doesn't seem to be working, so we will time members as usual, four minutes, and then we'll let you know when those four minutes are up. So apologies for that, but we'll have to do with what we've got.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm just wondering, I think, I've been told that Dunstfold Aerodrome was, when it was built for the war, there was some sort of agreement that it would be returned to fields afterwards. And I think if we were to agree to designate this, go against the recommendation, and agree to designate as a conservation area, that would prevent it from being returned to green fields, would it not? If you could just confirm that? Thank you.
I don't think I can answer that question.
Mr Mayor, I'm honestly not aware of that point, so I'm afraid I can give councillor Hyman a written answer afterwards, when I've had the opportunity to investigate that point further.
I think that anyway, there was a process towards the end of the last century by which it was agreed that, in fact, it would not be returned to green fields and would continue as a brownfield site. Are there any other speakers to this item? No? In that case, we will move to the recommendation on page 23.7. Is that agreed? Light leader, would you move the minutes of the 6th of June executive, please?
Mr Mayor, I believe there are some speakers in part 2. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah. Sorry. We do have speakers in part 2. Item 12, page 24, councillor Hyman.
Thank you again, Mr Mayor, just for asking for clarification, please, on behalf of people who might be intending to respond, because there's a further, almost a week, I think it's next Monday, that the consultation on Local Plan Part 2 closes. In view of the modifications envisaged by the council following Inspector Bore's examination in public sessions, which require some changes, I'm wondering whether or not there will be a second consultation because of changes that would be necessary to LPP 2. And if that was the case, if people were minded not to bother to respond at this stage to LPP 2 consultation, but to wait until another consultation later, would they lose out in any way by doing so? Or would you consider it absolutely necessary? Will officers recommend that any comments to LPP 2 as it stands, even though it's likely to be changed, should still be put in by Monday? So just for a bit of clarification, or can we sort of not worry about it, leave it till the timetable's sorted for another consultation, if there is one coming? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Leader?
Thank you. There will be, clearly, following Mr Bore's examination and his recommendations for certain modifications, there will be another consultation, councillor Hyman. I would strongly urge all residents and persons wishing to respond, to respond at every stage to each consultation, so there can be no concerns about anything being missed. But yes, there will have to be a further consultation in respect of the modifications recommended by Mr Bore to Local Plan Part 1. I hope that helps to clarify. Thank you.
And councillor Ward, I believe you wish to speak on this.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was obviously, like most people, quite saddened and a bit shocked by the uplift in housing, particularly taking over 50% of Woking's area. Since for a number of years I have consistently argued against Woking being included in the housing area, it gives me no great pleasure to feel that my earlier concerns over this, which council did not wish to take up, have unfortunately come to roost. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Ward, I believe you wish to speak to item 13.
No, thank you very much, Mr Mayor, I'll pass.
Thank you. And then item 14, councillor Hyman.
Thank you again, Mr Mayor. This is the air quality annual status report, which is rather disappointing that only superficial post-adoption scrutiny was allowed, rather than proper scrutiny in advance, and disappointed that the document wasn't available to the public in advance. But this is a rather outdated report from 2016, 2015 figures. So we have another one coming forward in September, which we'll address in greater detail. There was unfortunately some rather unrealistically corrected, supposedly corrected data, and the long-discredited air quality action plan within what the executive passed through. We have an air quality steering group which is being put together, and councillor, Mr Edwards, is going to be putting us together a meeting hopefully very soon. One thing I would say is it's difficult for us to move forward with the air quality steering group unless the leadership can accept and admit that there are problems with the system as it is. So we look forward to having that as a basis and some candid talks to start it off, so that we can start making progress. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Leader, you wish to sum up?
No.
Councillor Ward, sorry.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wish to express disappointment that some of these figures weren't available earlier to the public and more up to date, but enough said. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, thank you. Just to sum up on that and address some of the points raised, we all, as a leadership team and as an executive, and I know councillor Edwards has addressed this with you, Mr Hyman, councillor Hyman, sorry, we all see this now as a really important, a key priority of this council. We all acknowledge there were some issues with the computer system, hence some of the backlog and the reason that it took a long time for you to receive data. That is being addressed, and as you acknowledge, a report's coming forward a lot sooner for the 2017 year. And I know councillor Edwards and Mr Homewood, the head of service, are setting up the air quality steering group. That does comprise of two elected members of Waverley, and I know that, again, councillor Edwards is hoping that you will accept his invitation to join that group, so I trust that you'll be able to confirm that very soon, so that you can become involved and sort of also look and scrutinise the group and the work of that group going forward. Thank you.
That concludes...
Mr Mayor, yes, that does conclude the minutes of that meeting. Thank you very much.
Right, we'll move now to the executive of the 11th of July. Leader, will you move the minutes of the 11th of July executive?
Mr Mayor, thank you. Yes, I'm pleased to move the minutes of the 11th of July executive, and I'm pleased to have a seconder.
That would be me, happy to second.
Mr Mayor, in part 1, recommendations to council, starting on numbered page 8, we have the budget review. And the budget review clearly takes on several key points in terms of some of our real concerns here at present at Waverley, and I believe councillor Hall wanted to speak on that. Thank you.
Good evening, members. There are a few points in this item which need to be noted. There are at this time considerable uncertainties which require us to constantly review our macro-budget policy position. The process of review is therefore ongoing. We have four main points of main risk, which are: there is no official clarity on the negative grant, which is estimated to be as much as negative £800,000. The new homes bonus is under considerable threat and could cost somewhere to the tune of £1.1 million. The business rates retention plans are on hold by central government and could cost as much as £2 million. And lastly, there are moves to reduce the amount paid to us by Surrey County Council for recycling. This could cost as much as £800,000. Given these uncertainties, it is prudent to continually adjust our median-term financial strategy, increase our efficiencies and limit our capex. We will be running some briefings in September, as we get greater clarity on some of the risks ahead.
Are there any other speakers on this item? In that case, we will move to the recommendation, sorry, on page 9. Is that agreed?
Mr Mayor, thank you. Item 27, that is the creation of a property company. I think it's very clear that Waverley really needs to address its budget shortfall, like a number of councils, and this item, which is the agreement to actually set the company up, means that Waverley will be able to take opportunities that really benefit the borough and allow it to generate income. Just so that we're clear, the overview and scrutiny committee were supportive of the proposal, recognising this would allow the council more flexibility, and we are very, very clear that we're absolutely transparent in terms of our governance here, and all the company details, such as terms of reference, investment criteria, and all governance arrangements, will be considered by the overview and scrutiny committee before being finalised. We hope that this company will be up and running by the autumn. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Williamson.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. As the chairman of the overview and scrutiny committee, which looked at this particular issue, there's just a couple of points that I wanted to make. Firstly, as the leader says, on balance, the committee thought it a good idea to, for such a company, to allow it to take advantage of the benefits that such a company would afford the council, be able to do things which otherwise, as a council, it may not otherwise be able to do. However, there were a number of concerns which were quite forcefully expressed in the committee. The scope was one, the scope that this particular company will have, but perhaps more importantly, that the checks and the balances under which that company would operate. We discussed a number of things, professional advice, competition, the possibility of other local authorities chasing up the prices and the consequential bubble that may arise. I wasn't surprised when, July the 11th, there was a leading article in The Times which specifically covered this subject. I'm tempted to quote from it, but I'm not going to. I will circulate it to the members of the ONS committee, and I would suggest that all the members have a look at it. The article painted a far worse picture than we had thought. Local authorities now, in some areas, have up to 30% of the market of commercial properties. I mean, it really is a bubble. We need to be extremely careful, and we need to ensure that the checks and balances are in place. It's clearly up to the council where it invests its money and decide how it invests that taxpayers' money. And I think we all agree, as the leader's just said, that funding in appropriate investments is certainly the direction of travel. We need to invest money in order to cover the shortage in government funding. The ONS committee thought it was its duty to absolutely scrutinise these checks and balances, and we certainly look forward to doing it. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just very briefly, I won't quote from the article, but we do have a briefing that's been organised prior to the audit committee meeting on Monday, and this is one of the subjects, so one or two members might like to learn more at that. I understand all members would be welcome. That's at six o'clock on Monday, and it's an audit briefing. If the chairman could just indicate whether or not that is open to other members to attend, but I think they normally are, so people who do have concerns. But yes, we could certainly email the Times article around, so everybody knows what's going on nationally and what the bigger picture is. Thank you.
Any more speakers? No? Well, councillor, would you, sorry, leader, would you like to sum up?
Mr Mayor, thank you. Yes, councillor Williamson raised some very valid points, and clearly, we're all keen that we don't fall into this trap of inflated prices, as you'd speak with other local authorities. And we're also very clear that we want to ensure that we do work very closely with the scrutiny committee on this. To the point raised by councillor Hyman, I'm sure that we can ensure that there's a note out to members, we'll liaise with councillor Gray in his capacity as chairman of the audit committee, and make sure something just goes out to members, clarifying the time of that meeting, should they wish to attend, and I'm sure they'll find it very, very valuable. Other than that, no, I think everything has been said, Mr Mayor, and I'd just like to move to the recommendation. Thank you.
Right, the recommendation is on pages, oh, 9 and 10, on pages 11 and 12. Are they agreed? Right, we will move on to item 29, building control options, and I would remind members that this was considered in exempt. Leader?
Mr Mayor, I'll keep this very brief, given that it was an exempt item. Clearly, if members want to go into exempt, that's fine, but I'll cover it as an exempt item, and I think they'll find that in actual fact, the report that goes with it is self-explanatory. A lot of work has gone in from the building control and planning teams in relation to this matter, and it was the subject of a lengthy scrutiny report as well, and scrutiny by the overview and scrutiny committee, to make sure that there was a really, and is a very robust, business case for this proposal. And as I say, the recommendations are set out very clearly within the exempt part of the report, Mr Mayor.
Right, are there any speakers, bearing in mind that we would have to go into exempt if you touch on the matters in the pink papers? Councillor Ramsdale.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I intend to speak without us needing to go into exempt. A number of years ago, I had quite a lot of dealings with property development in and around Waverley, and we always used to use the in-house building control team. Sadly, we saw the quality of what was available drop away, so I'm really pleased to see the investment of time and energy going into building control, to see it turn around. The sorts of things that are covered in the papers, I think, are excellent, and I wish you every good luck with that.
Thank you. Leader, would you like to sum up?
I think councillor Ramsdale's actually summed up very well. As I say, the team have got some excellent ideas, and as I say, I think, you know, they really want to move forward, and the business plan before you and the proposal tonight enables them, and enables us as a council, to actually do just that. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Right, the recommendation is on pages 12 and 44. Is that agreed? Moving to part 2?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There are a number of matters of report in part 2, and I understand there are a number of speakers as well that are listed. Thank you.
Right, on item 32, I have councillor Welland.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Last week at the executive meeting, Nick Williams and myself raised the concerns felt by many of our local residents, the closure of public toilet facilities in our ward, Farncombe, and also in Godalming. We felt it was important to raise those concerns again here, as indeed a number of our residents have through the questions they've raised earlier on tonight's agenda. We all recognise the financial pressures councils are under, as councillor Hall made very clear earlier, and that as councils are not required to provide public toilets by law, expenditure in this area is more vulnerable than other areas, which councils are required to provide by law. It is important, though, for us to recognise those things are community values, even if statute does not require us to do so. Public toilets are one of those areas which the public arguably expect councils to provide. The lack of them can be particularly felt by some of the more vulnerable members of our community, whose health or physical conditions do require access to public toilet facilities if they are to be able to move freely in our towns. facilities if they are to be able to move freely in our towns. Their absence can be damaging to our overall community wellbeing. It is disappointing that Waverley has not so far chosen to listen to local residents and reopen the closed facilities. However, on a more positive note, we do very much welcome Waverley's decision to engage with Godleming Town Council, where we understand a number of options were put forward and explored. We look forward to hearing in due course Waverley's proposals on how these discussions could be taken forward to arrive at potentially a positive outcome for our local community. Thank you.
councillor Williams.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will be very short. I support the points made by my co-ward councillor. We were very pleased to learn yesterday evening that there had been a meeting with the leader and members of Godleming Town Council. That is clearly a positive step forward, but I would reiterate that this is a very important item in Godleming and Farncombe, and we must continue to move forward to achieve a very positive outcome for our residents. Thanks.
Thank you. We move on to item 34. councillor Hymen.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is the Weyden Lane former landfill site. I did attend the executive meeting and spoke on this matter and would like to follow that up, but the minutes before us here suggest that the decision is only financial, a financial one, and that's a decision to put it off for two or three years, till after the next election certainly, and there are other reasons which are, which we've gone into in some detail in the executive report, which aren't in front of us here. The executive report also made it clear that there were considerable legal difficulties with this, and I will quote from it. It says, because of these complexities at the first stage of the feasibility study, further external legal advice has been sought in relation to both the Weyden Lane and Memorial Ground Farnham sites regarding the nature of the restricted covenants and what limitations there are on the council's ability to grant leases and sell land at each site. And I did speak about this and the leader made a mistake in her response in saying that this was only about, this item is only about the Weyden Lane landfill. Of course, the report is far wider than that. I did ask if members could have sight of that further legal advice, and the leader's answer was that, didn't answer that point. So that is what I'd like to follow up, if I may, Mr Mayor. Will the leader please now agree to instruct officers to allow members to view the further legal advice? Thank you.
Shall I take the other speakers first? Yes. councillor Ward.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't wish to add anything at this stage. Thank you.
councillor Storey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to say that as a member of the special interest group which looked at this landfill site and the potential uses thereof, along with my colleagues councillor Frost and councillor Hargreaves and councillor Seeburn, that I'm disappointed that we have had to postpone any activity on this site, but really, it was a very complex position and that we would have had to spend considerable amount of money just sorting out what we could do and what we couldn't do before we actually started to do anything to improve the site. And so I think the correct decision was made at the executive that we should lay it aside for the moment until we actually have a good position to take that forward.
Thank you. councillor Martin, this is a part two item and I have not got you listed as a speaker.
Could I just raise a point of order, please, Mr Mayor?
Yes, okay.
I'm very happy for social media to be used in the chamber, but for the last half an hour, there has been constant electronic pinging somewhere over here. It is extremely irritating. I wonder if members could ensure that any social media they're using runs silently. Thank you.
Right, leader, do you wish to respond to councillor Hymen's question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I think it's important to understand, as councillor Storey said, that the real key issue sort of surrounding all this and not being able to progress, and the key reason, unfortunately, comes back to a lack of capital funds. I note his question about legal advice, and unless it was pertinent to an issue, we would not normally share that advice. So at this stage, no, councillor Hymen, I will not be instructing officers to share legal advice. And on that note, I think councillor Storey has summed up very well on my behalf, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, he's good at that. Item 35, I have councillor Hymen again.
Thank you, I did speak on this item at the executive and I won't repeat that, and I did speak to Calville Mills at some length about this earlier today. So just one issue, it's in the recommendation, I think it says something like that this is going to be reconsidered in the middle of, what was agreed, is that it would be reconsidered in mid-September 2017. That's actually at the bottom of page 76 of the exec papers I'm looking at, so it's not useful to you, but we don't have an executive meeting in the middle of September 2017, so I'm just wondering when this will be. We do have an ONS, Environment ONS meeting, at which we've got Brightwell's on the agenda, so we could look at it there, certainly, but if you could just clarify, please, whenabouts this will be looked at? I think there's an exec on the 5th of September, probably a month later, at the beginning of October. If you could just clarify, thank you.
councillor Ward.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's always very sad when we have to go to advanced security for sites. It just causes me great grief every time I walk past the Marlborough Head to see it boarded up with graffiti on it, when in fact it could still be a functioning public house until the inevitable axe falls upon it, so I think that's just rather sad.
Item 36, councillor Storey, you no longer wish to speak. So item 37, councillor Hymen.
A withdrawal, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Hymen. That is all the speakers I have here. Leader.
Mr Mayor, if I may just come back with your indulgence on the matters raised about Brightwell's security by councillors Hymen and councillor Ward, we need to be very mindful of public safety at this site, both the Marlborough Head and the former theatre that is now very much in a dilapidated state, has become quite a hive of activity for antisocial behaviour, and as a council, we have a responsibility to ensure that that site is secure as far as possible and that we're doing our utmost to demonstrate that is the case. In terms of the timing, councillor Hymen, thank you for your offer to bring something to an ONS, but clearly that is not the right arena for such a matter, and it will be an executive director's action, should it be, need to be, and I hope that just helps to clarify that point for you. Mr Mayor, thank you, and that concludes my summing up on that item. Thank you.
So are the minutes agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. If we move on now to the special executive, which was held earlier this afternoon, leader, will you move the minutes of the special executive held this evening?
Mr Mayor, thank you. I'll just give Mr Roberts time to leave the council chamber. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm pleased to move the minutes of the special executive of the 18th of July, held earlier this evening, and I believe I have a seconder.
As ever, I'm happy to second.
Thank you. Are there any speakers on this? Yes, councillor Ward.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm utterly delighted by this. Isn't it nice to be saying something nice for a change? I've always been concerned that we haven't really cooperated enough around nearby councils. I see this as a golden opportunity to increase that cooperation. I see we are moving into having a property company. East Hampshire seem to have been remarkably successful in that respect, so I hope there will be a huge rub-off on us for that. And most of all, of course, I think East Hans were the only council in the country to actually lower their council tax last year, so I think borrowing their chief executive for any amount of time should be a wonderful thing for this council and hopefully will improve everything for us and our residents. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
councillor Tom Martin.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm absolutely delighted that councillor Ward is so pleased with the decision that we're making. I've had the pleasure of meeting the new executive director, absolutely terrific guy, and I think he really will drive this council forwards in the interim period until we can secure a permanent post, and I think exactly as councillor Ward has said, East Hans does have a lot of similarities with Waverley, both in the direction that they're travelling and indeed the general makeup of the borough as well, with their own towns and villages. So I think it's a very neat fit, and indeed, we get the opportunity of drawing on the expertise that East Hans and Haven have got themselves. So I really look forward to Tom starting. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Mrs James.
Thank you, Mayor. Having been an East Hampshire district councillor for 12 years before arriving in Waverley, I can absolutely say that it was a brilliant authority, and anybody who comes from the East Hampshire district council will be very good, and Mr Hallwood is extremely good. Thank you very much. So members have always been bored by me saying that, but now you can understand. Thank you.
Well, seldom have I seen such widespread rejoicing in this chamber. Leader, would you wish to sum up?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Yes, I am very pleased to sum up. I'm also very pleased, on behalf of both myself and other councillors, to be moving this forward tonight. Mr Hallwood brings a wealth of experience from East Hampshire, Haven, where, as I say, he is already working in an executive director's role, but what's more important is the number of synergies that that organisation has and the number of real strengths that it can help to bring to this council. Not only, as I say, is he working across East Hans and Haven, but again, many members will know, as I'm sure Mrs James does, that they link in very strongly and also work with the South Downs National Park, aspects of Winchester, and Hart as well, one of our other neighbours. So in terms of what they can help to bring to us as a council, in terms of experience and, as I say, a number of synergies going forward, I think it's exciting. It's the way that we should be really looking to move this organisation forward, and I'm really pleased to bring these recommendations before you this evening. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Right, the recommendations 12 to 14, set out in the table minutes, are they agreed? And we now move on to the minutes of the standards panel, held on 6th of June 2017, which are on page 27. councillor Goodrich to present.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have pleasure in presenting the minutes of the standards panel held on the 6th of June 2017, and with the following wind, I think I have a seconder.
Please to second, Mr Mayor.
I'm obliged. There's no item in part one, and under part two, I just want to clarify and expand paragraph 4.8, particularly the bullet points that are there. As you're aware, the standards panel now has responsibility for the constitution, and dealing with the first bullet point, we had a discussion on the panel about the period when apologies should be given, particularly for the joint planning committee, and it is noon on the day of the meeting, and for joint planning, we think that really is not fair on any substitute, because normally, the paperwork is about an inch thick. There's usually a site meeting, well, there's always a site meeting and this one has taken place earlier, and you would miss out on the site meeting because it's invariably not on the same day as the meeting, generally speaking, and therefore, we felt that with particular regard to joint planning, that noon on the day of the meeting wasn't good enough, and therefore, we've asked the officers to bring this back to us, actually as soon as possible, so that we can consider an alternative. In the meantime, I would urge members of the joint planning committee who wish to apologise for a joint planning meeting, to give as much notice as possible, bearing in mind the problems that I've just outlined, so that at least they can get to a site visit, because when we're in a quasi judicial function, it's important that we brief ourselves as well as we possibly can. The second bullet point on political proportionality rules is that we did query on the panel why we had to have the same political party for a substitute on planning in particular, bearing in mind we don't vote on planning politically. We were told that the main committee has to be politically proportionate, it was thought, and therefore substitutes would have to follow the same line, but we have asked for a paper to be prepared so that we can consider all quasi judicial functions of this council as to whether it has to be politically proportionate, bearing in mind all the quasi judicial functions are not political. So that is something which, again, we've asked to come before us. So I just wanted to clarify that as to specifically what the points are, and to particularly emphasise on joint planning for substitutes to apologise, if possible, more punctiliously than the rules currently provide. Mr Mayor, I'm not aware of any wanting to speak on that item, in part two, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are they agreed? We now move on to item 10, minutes of the licensing and regulatory committee held on the 19th of June 2017. councillor Patricia Ellis to present.
I'm pleased to present the minutes of the meeting of the licensing and regulatory committee held on the 19th of June 2017, and I believe that I have a seconder.
I wish to second those minutes.
Thank you, councillor. I have no items to report relating to Licensing Act 2003. I have no items or recommendations to the council in part one, and I have not received any requests to speak on items in part two, and that concludes my minutes.
Is that agreed?
Agreed. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Right, there are no exempt items to Right, there are no exempt items to consider. Thank you for attending, and the meeting is now closed. Please join me for a drink in due course.
Please rise whilst the mayor leaves the chamber.